Okay, everybody shout their government book out and we're on page six. Okay, we're starting a new text today. This text is still gonna talk about some government. But this government that they're talking about, I want you to think when we're reading it, is it a real government? The government like our government? Or is this a fictional government? So we're gonna read this story and that's your question for the end of the story. Is this the real government? Like in our real life? Or is this a fictional government? Alright, so we're gonna read paragraph, we're gonna read through it together. And as we're reading through it today, we're gonna focus on vocabulary. Okay? Sometimes we focus on different skills. Today's focus is vocabulary. We're gonna work on figuring out some of the bigger words. So I really understand the text. Alright, so this is the first town meeting from the people of Sparks. Okay, so this is from, the people of Sparks from tells me that this is just what?
A short excerpt.
An excerpt. It's just part of the story. This is not a whole story. If you wanna read the whole story, I have to check the book out in the library or something like that. This is just part of it, okay? Alright, so now because this is part of it, they give us a foreword. A foreword is gonna tell me what I've missed. If I pick up a book, let me give you an example. If I pick up this book, all lines here. If I pick up this book and I start right here, page one, and I read the whole book while I understand the book?
Yes.
Yes, probably so. If I put, pick this book up and I start on page eleven and read the rest of the book, will I understand this book?
No.
No. Because, why? Why will I not understand this book? Y'all tell?
Can you skip a page?
Because I've skipped pages. I don't know what's happened before it to understand why all of this back here is happening. That is why an author gives you a foreword. Because they're telling you what all of this is that you missed. Because what you have here is just part of it. It's just like the ending of the story. Or maybe the middle of the story. There's parts of it that you haven't read yet because you don't have the whole book. So they're giving you a little paragraph to get you caught up. A little summary of what the beginning was, was, okay? So it's very important that you read that. If you skip the foreword and you stop down here, you're not gonna understand the story. Yes Bryson?
So there's like some lines of the story?
Mm-hmm. Like some lines like the beginning or whatever part you missed. Yep. So you have to understand the rest of it. So it's very important that we read that. So let's read our foreword. Read it to us, um, Braylon. Everybody's following along? The foreword. Distanced?
In which has, in which war has
devastated?
Devastated, um, it tells the story of a group of people that is living in a neighborhood of land who had, who had
underground?
They could not know how to use electric
Electricity?
They, they found settlement in Sparks where they all worked and said that Sparks resources are needed and it's used to help with the
Alright, so when we, before we read the rest of the story, we need to make sure we understand what's already happened. Okay, before I ever read any more of it, I need to figure out is this a fiction story or a non-fiction story? Based on what you've read, do you think this is fictional or non-fictional? Remember fiction means that it's not real, it's fake. Non-fiction means it's real. So do you think this is a fiction, not real? Or non-fiction, a real text? What do you think? Nadia? Okay Nadia says fiction. Fiction, why do you think fiction, uh, Nadia? What was your clue? Okay. Give me a little more. Do you guys agree or disagree that it's fiction? Show me your non-verbals, everybody. I wanna see what you think. Okay, so the class as a whole agrees it's fiction. Tell me why? Why do you think that? I should say more than three hands. Everybody show up to this page. Why do you think it's fiction Stella?
Me too. Um, in the like illustration, they not really have like the real photo and then in, um,
The foreword?
It said they blend, um, like because their town had no electricity.
Okay. So they no longer have electricity. We know that in our world we have
Electricity.
Now in some third world countries, um, like in the United States, we're very blessed to have electricity, right? But there are some other countries that there are some other countries that are not as blessed as we are. They don't have as much as we do. So they may not have electricity. So that doesn't really tell me that it, I see why because you're thinking about the United States. There are other parts in the world where they don't have electricity. So it's another clue that this is fictional. Now she's also using the picture. That's a great clue. I like that. Cause remember we talked about yesterday, the author and the illustrator worked together to tell you things, right? To give you information. So that's great. She's not using just the text. But what's another clue that this is fictional Gavin?
Um, it said the people of Sparks is set in a not so distant future.
In the what?
Future.
Future. If it's in the future, do we know what's gonna happen in the future?
No.
Can I write information about the future?
No.
No. This is a huge clue that it is fiction. Everybody write fiction at the top and draw a line to future. That is a huge clue that it's fiction. Good job Gavin. Yes. Okay, an underground city. That's another clue. Do we really have underground cities?
No.
We have subways.
We do have subways, but that's not a city.
Hey, we, we
A way to get
We have sunk in, uh, like, um, not single. We have like, um, sunk in like old, old, um, popular places.
Yes, but this is like, it's saying a underground city where people are actually still living and that's that's not what, that's not the same thing. Well, we have a lot of people shouting out. A lot of people shouting out. Yes Gavin?
Um, there are some underground cities in some places that are really hidden. So no one can find them there. And sometimes there are people living in there.
There are some. You're correct about that. But for us around here, there's not. So based off of what we know about the real world, that might be a clue to us that it's fictional. But you were right. If you went to some other parts of the world, there are some. Yes. Do what? Shh. Okay, let's move on. Yes Stella?
I know that it's also fiction because when it said up there, it said underground, but when it's in here, it's like above ground.
Okay. I think you're gonna, Stella says here it says underground. But over here it's above ground, right? So she says that's fictional because they don't match. I think if we keep reading, you're gonna understand why this is above ground. Because remember, since they were underground and they did what? Hayes? So they did what? Yeah, it says they fled. If you fled, right here fled, everybody put underline fled. If these people fled, that means they did what?
Left.
Left. So I was trying to flood, I wanted to write left. So Stella, you said in the foreword it's underground, but the picture it's above ground. Those don't match. Why do you think that that it was underground and now it's above ground? What did those people do Jerry?
They moved.
They moved. They fled. They left. So where they're going to may be above ground. Yes. And that may be where the picture is. We'll see. Yes.
Um, in underground, they have no food unless they bought some water and they possibly run out.
Right? Which is what happened is, right? They didn't have electricity. If they don't have electricity, they're probably gonna run out of some of those other things. Okay. Um, I wanna talk about a few vocabulary words in here and then we're gonna move on. Make sure we really understand. When it says, um, the very last sentence, right up to the last sentence. But Sparks resources are limited and its leaders conflicted about letting the newcomers stay. What does that word conflicted mean? What does that word conflicted mean? You're conflicted, you're what Travis?
Uh, mad?
Okay.
Conflicted to address.
Maybe. What do you think Nadia?
Like not sure.
Not sure? Landon?
I don't think it means that you do not want them there.
You're not sure you want them there? Okay. Hayes, what do you think?
I'm sure the word conflicted, it's often getting me like a problem maybe.
Okay, like a problem? Yeah. And we're add-ons to that Ruthie?
I don't, I don't agree on what I'm saying because, um, I think it means like it means it means like he's like doesn't, he's not, he's like easy, he's unsure about letting them stay there cause he doesn't know, he doesn't know him, he, if he doesn't know like
Okay, so something I've heard you guys say over and over is unsure. They have different thoughts about this. They, some might think that they should, some might think that they should not. Yes Bryson?
I like that one that Hayes said because I think conflicted means like
Okay. Yes Wyatt?
Um, I read before the, the word and after and it made me think like that they don't like, cause it says, um, their resources are limited.
Yes, so if the resources are limited, that means they have not much, not a lot of resources. So if new people come in, that's gonna make the resources even more lower, small, limited, more limited, right? So they're not sure. They're not sure they should or they should not let these people stay. So, the people of Sparks are, are in this new place, right? Sparks is, where is Sparks?
Underground.
Above ground.
Underground.
Okay, I've got some different, some of you think Sparks is the underground place, some of you think Sparks is above ground. I want you to read this paragraph again. And then let's see if the class can come up with a, an agreement where Sparks is. Read it to yourself. You're trying to figure out if Sparks above ground or underground? Be ready to tell me why you think that. Is Sparks above ground or underground? Hayes, what do you think? Okay. What do you think Hayes? Okay Hayes, you say above ground. Why do you think Sparks is above ground?
Because it only, it only said, it only says underground wouldn't in that if it, if they lived underground, I would say underground a little bit more than would.
Alright, well what do we know about the underground place? What did they do? We're talking about how they They fled. So they were underground and they fled, right? So they were underground, they fled. Where did they go? Hayes?
To Sparks, which is above ground.
To Sparks, which is above ground. So they're saying these people left, when they left, they found the settlement of what? Okay, all lines up here. Everybody. Gavin, Jerry. They fled their underground place, right Hayes? When they left, when they fled, it says they found the settlement of Sparks. So they were underground, they fled, and they found what?
Sparks.
Sparks. So that means Sparks is
Above.
Above ground. That means that there's a good possibility that this picture represents what?
Sparks.
Sparks. So above it, everyone write Sparks. Okay, so now these people that are having a meeting, the leaders are unsure about letting them stay. The people that are having a meeting, they're unsure if they're gonna let them stay. Those people are where? The leaders of what? Whole unit. Yes, multiple. But what is this unit about? This unit's about what Alyssa? Government. So these leaders are their what?
Government.
Their version of government. So do you think this story, remember I showed you at the beginning, do you think that this story, this prose is going to be about government, like our real life government, or a fictional government? Fictional, because this story is fictional. Yes Hayes?
I don't know how it's fictional.
Tell me.
In the top right corner it says science fiction.
Bingo. Why do I use those clues? Alright, class last?
Yes, yes.
Paragraph one of the story is where we're at. We've already read the foreword, now reading paragraph one of the story. Read for us Wyatt. And when you're reading this today, because this is a fictional story, I want you to say with some expression. Think about the way that they would actually be talking, okay? Alright, go ahead Wyatt.
While Lena slept, the three town leaders were holding a meeting. They sat at her table in the tail of the room of the town hall, which looked out over the plaza. Mary's handkerchief collapsed tightly in front of her. Ben scowled, his gray eyebrows, out eyebrows bunched together, deepening the two lines between them. Wilmer pulled nervously on one ear and looked from Mary to Ben and back to Mary.
Okay, so that whole paragraph is just telling us about the what?
The place.
The meeting and the place.
The meeting and the place. They've given us the setting, which is in the what?
The tower.
The tower. So if we kept on reading, then we would know that the meeting is actually
In the tower.
In the tower, right? Okay, so the meetings are a tower and there are how many leaders? Three, right? I see all of you holding your fingers up. Three, thanks. Who are our leaders? They're gonna be the characters in our story. Tell me one of them Gavin. Hey Mary, remember I talked about it on my paper, you need it on yours. Mary, who else Jerry? Okay, yes, but we're thinking about the leaders. Ben. Lena is a what? She is asleep, but she's not a leader. She's a
Teenager.
Teenager. Remember the foreword said teenager Lena. So remember leaders, that's usually gonna be adults. So we have main, uh, Mary, Ben, there's one more. Who's your other leader? Callan, who's your other leader? So who do you think? You got it. I just saw you say it. Wilmer, yeah. Be confident y'all. Stella, you got it. Don't whisper back there. Wilmer, Mary, and Ben. They're the three leaders that are having a
Meeting.
Why are they meeting? Why are they meeting Stella?
Uh, um, like see if the other people can stay.
Yeah, to see if they can stay. Okay, now I want us to talk about one vocabulary word, then we're gonna move on. It says Ben scowled. What does that mean? What does that mean? Think about what's happening. Think about what they're talking about. Let's make an inference. What do you think that word means? What do you think, uh, Ruthie?
I think that it means scowl, it means like, like he's looking at them strictly like, should I do this or should I not?
Okay, so everybody look at Ruthie's face. She's doing a great impress, impression.
Look at me.
Okay, it's a look like he's not too what? He's not too happy, he's not real
He's serious.
Sure. He's serious. He's not happy about this, right? So we're gonna put an expression. An expression means it's something that you do with your face. An expression is something you do with your face. Expression to show, let's do it over here in the, um, over here in the lungs. Expression to show what?
Anger, unsureness.
Maybe uncertainty? Okay. Like he's unsure? Um, or let's, I wanna make sure that you guys understand it when you go back. Let's say to show he's unhappy. I think they'll, yeah, that's good. He's unhappy. Expression to show he's unhappy. You're scowling and you're letting them know you're not too sure about that. Yes. We'll get there. Give me just a minute. Hayes, do you have this? I'm ready to move on and you're playing. Yes Wyatt? Can you wait just a little bit? Go quickly. Y'all are drinking a whole lot of water in class. Just cause you have that water bottle on your desk doesn't mean that you have to drink it. Go quickly so you don't miss class. Okay. On your page, the next, the rest of this page, you've got one paragraph, a sentence, a paragraph, a sentence. The rest of that, I want you to read in your head to yourself and then we're gonna talk about it. Reading it to yourself, just the rest of that page. Landon, I just gave you directions. We're all gonna just go a little bit. Can you wait? Some of your friends are still reading. You are not talking when you're done. Okay, so in those paragraphs, what's happening? We know from what we just read that the people are meeting. They're talking about should the people stay, should they not, right? They're trying to decide what they should do because remember their resources are already
Limited.
Limited. Now, what did you just read about? What happened in these? Y'all Stella, I love that hand. Tell me.
Um, William and Ben, Ben, William and Mary and Ben, they don't, they don't know what to put the people.
Okay, they don't know where the people should go. So do they want them at Sparks? No, they don't want them at Sparks because they have limited So because they don't want them there, they have limited resources. Bryson, I like the way you're participating. Y'all Stella says they're trying to figure out a way to send them. They gave a recommendation, right? What is their recommendation? Callan, thank you for raising your hand. Okay. Yeah, they say we don't have enough space here. They could go to time gap. So let's see what happens. Um, paragraph at the top. Read it for us Alyssa, nice and loud. Everybody following along, paragraph at the top. Landon, whatever you're playing with, put it up.
Mary nodded and shook her head. Don't be hilarious.
Don't be
Ridiculous.
There you go.
She said, that's at least two weeks walk away. But could these people, feeble people travel that far? Could, how could they carry enough food with them? Where could, where would they get enough food unless we
Empty?
Empty our storehouse and gave them any, everything.
Okay. So at the very end, Wilmer says, well maybe they can go to time gap. And now Mary's responding. What is Mary's response? How does she feel about that? About sending these people to time gap? I should say every hand in the room, cause everybody just read that paragraph together. How does Mary feel about that suggestion, that recommendation? Landon?
She don't feel like it's a good idea because it's about two weeks, uh, away and it's frankly impossible for me to carry them.
That was a great explanation. He could've just said she doesn't like that idea. But he said she doesn't like that idea because, and then he explained it. I love the way you did that Landon. Good job. Okay, so he gave you a great explanation. Mary says
No.
No, because it's gonna take two weeks and they don't have enough food. Now she calls them feeble people.
What is feeble?
That was my question Ruthie. What's the question Ruthie? What does feeble mean? We're gonna make an inference. Based on the clues in the text, what do you think feeble means? Remember an inference is gonna use context clues to figure something out. What do you think feeble means Ruthie? You have that question, so you should be looking in the what? What are some clues that would tell you what feeble means? Millian? I want you looking for your clues. What do you think feeble means and what are some of your clues that help tell you that? Broly, what do you think feeble means?
I think hungry.
You think what? Okay, Broly says hungry. Why do you think hungry Broly?
Because, um, I think hungry because, um, they haven't eaten in a while because of the, um, Sparks food sources are limited.
Okay, so she says hungry because they haven't eaten in a while. The resources are limited. Okay, do we have another um, guess of what this word would mean? What do you think this word means? Alyssa?
I think the word means they're needy people.
Okay, needy people? Why do you think needy?
Because, um, they, because they, um, come and they take like almost all the resources.
Okay, she says cause they come and take all the resources. Please don't write this yet. Normally I want you to write what I have, but I'm just making a list of some things you guys say. What do you think that it means? Add-ons to that Nadia?
I'd like to add on to Riley because I think they're hungry. Because all, all these sentences around it, it talks about how they don't have enough food.
Okay, so Nadia's still agreeing with hungry because they don't have food. What do you think, um, Wyatt?
I feel like they might be weak.
Okay, why do you think weak? Why do you think weak?
Because they don't have enough food and it's probably like far back and they probably don't have
Okay, you're on the right track. They don't have food. When you don't have food, that makes you weak. And what do we know about this trip? What do we know about this trip? Stella, don't you worry my girlfriend. Stella, what do we know about this trip?
It's very long.
It's very long. How long?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. So if you don't have food, if you don't have food, they've already walked to Sparks, right? Now from Sparks, they gotta go further, two weeks further, which is a long trip with no that would make you hungry, tired, starving. Wyatt said it would make you weak. Feeble means that you are beside feeble. I want you to write weak. They are needy. They need a lot of things. They are hungry. They don't have food. All of that together makes them weak. So just because you said hungry, that doesn't mean you were wrong. You said needy, that doesn't mean you're wrong. We can put all those clues together to figure out the meaning of feeble, which is weak. Yes, Jerry. Okay, maybe a little old crippled, which would be another, another sign of their weak. Yes. Yes. And feeble, feeble could also mean like you're vulnerable. So if you're poor, you don't have food, you don't have clothes, that would leave you vulnerable. All of that kind of goes together. Okay, we need to move on. Alright, look at the next paragraph. Read that paragraph to us. Stella.
Well, knowing she was right, then peo- the people of Sparks knew of only three other settlements. And they, they heard from their roamers that those places were smaller and poorer than Sparks. Their inhabitants inhabitants would want to, wouldn't want extra mouths to to feed either.
Okay, so originally they're saying the people could go to Pine Gap. Mary says no. Now what are they saying in this paragraph? Bryson, what do you think? Yeah, they're saying we don't need anybody else to feed, right? But they're still talking about sending them where? To another place. They decided. It says Wilmer knew she was right. So Pine Gap's out of the question. They're not gonna send them to Pine Gap. But now they're talking about, hey, says sending them to another place. It says that they knew of three other settlements. So there are three other places they could send them, right? But those places are what? What's the problem with those places? It's not that they're too far, but those places have a problem too. Braylon, what's wrong with them? They're already feeding enough mouths. They don't have enough resources either, right? It says that they are smaller and poor. That means their resources are, if you're even more poor, then that means you're gonna have limited resources. Since they're already feeding enough mouths. This word, their inhabitants. What do you know that word inhabitants is? Read that sentence again, the sentences around it. And I want you to tell me what you think inhabitants mean. Let's see, everybody looking in their text. What do you think an inhabitant is? What do you think an inhabitant is? Jerry?
It means like maybe their own, like something that belongs to them.
Okay, Drew, when I read this, you said something that belongs to them, right? So if I say their inhabitants wouldn't want extra mouths to feed either. So their, something that belongs to them wouldn't want extra mouths to feed. Does that make sense there? So let's hang on again. What do you think inhabitants means? Gavin?
Whoever lives there.
Okay, so if I said the people that live there wouldn't want extra mouths to feed either, does that make sense? Yes, if they don't have a lot of money, then do they want new people coming in? So an inhabitant is a citizen and someone that already lived there. Okay Stella, that's the third time you've yelled out. A inhabitant is someone who lives there or a citizen. Make sure you have that on your paper so that you understand the story later when you like to read it again. Yes Travis? No, an inhabitant is just a, a normal citizen. It's not the government. Let me write this in here so that you guys Citizens are just normal people, just normal people that live there. So an inhabitant is just someone that lives there. It's not the government. Yes Nadia. Um, yes. Um, we'll see when we get there. Alright, the last paragraph on page seven. Nadia, read it for us. Oh, just a minute Nadia, we're not all there. Okay, go ahead.
The three of them gazed out the window and down at the, at the little plaza filled with strangely people from a city under the earth. Four hundred of them with no food, no possessions to speak of and nowhere to go.
Now based on that paragraph, I want you by yourself. We've been doing a lot of vocabulary together. By yourself, I want you to tell me what the word possessions means. Read those clues. Write your meaning right here to the start. I'm coming around to see what you think possessions mean. You're making an inference to figure out that vocabulary word. Tap it out. Do your best. What is a possession? Alright, Kaya, tell me what you think possessions is.
It's like your stuff you need.
Right, your stuff you need was another word for that. It's your, um, belongings. Sorry, I was trying to Okay, your belongings, your property, your resources, your stuff. Wyatt? Okay, belongings. Okay, some of you put specific things because like they said four hundred, then with no food, mine put no water. Water would be an example of a possession. But it also includes things like a jacket, um, shoes. Some of our possessions today would be like a cellphone or a purse. A, a possession is just something that belongs to you, okay? Alright. Flip over with the last part of this text. Last part of this text. Okay, I'm going to read the next paragraph. And I want us, we're gonna talk about some of the vocabulary words and make sure we understand what's happening in this, this paragraph. So everybody's with me. It says, what I failed to understand. Are we there? What I failed to understand, said Ben, is why this particular misfortune has happened to us. He paused, looking into the air to his left and frowned. This was a habit of his. He seemed to have a pause and a frown every now and then to put together his thoughts. Wilmer and Mary had gotten used to waiting through these pauses. I don't see that we deserve it, Ben went on after a few seconds, having labored as diligently as we have. And just when we're starting to prosper at last, after so many years of, well, adversity is a mild word for it. What is Ben saying here? What is Ben saying? Ben's done all the talking in this paragraph. What is he saying? What is he saying? When he says why this, I don't understand why this particular misfortune has happened to us. I don't see that we deserve it, having labored as diligently as we have. Just when we start to prosper. What is he saying? There are a lot of big words that he's trying to say. Callan? Okay, Callan says, he's trying to say that they need the food more than them, so they need the food more than the people that have come. What, what do you think he's trying to say Nadia?
I think he's trying to say like, it's unfair, like why do we have to take care of all these other people?
Bingo Nadia. He's saying this is unfair. Why do we, why is this our problem? He doesn't understand why this is their problem. When he says, oh, I'm on the wrong page, so I flipped it over. When he says this particular misfortune, then a misfortune is a what? A misfortune is what Bryson? Okay, something unlucky, yeah. What would, if it's unlucky and it's happened to you, then that would be a what have, what have we been talking about in our last text? The government helped us fix problems, okay? So if it's a misfortune, you said it's unlucky and it happened to you, then it would be a a problem. It could be cause and effect. It would, I understand what you're saying. If it's happened to you, you want another cause of it, right? But if it's a misfortune, all eyes up here. Back, back, back and start. Everybody. If it's a misfortune, Bryson said it's unlucky and it happened to you. That's true. If it's unlucky, that means something that's not good and it's happened to you. A lot of times we would say that is a problem. So a misfortune would be a problem. He's, I don't know why this particular problem has happened to us. I don't understand why we have to deal with this problem. Nadia was correct when she said he feels like it is unfair. He doesn't understand why they have to take care of these people. Do you have this on your paper? You're sure? Cuz I don't think you do. Braylon, do you have it? Problem. So it does talk about, a misfortune is a problem. Alright, last. My turn, I just asked him specifically if he had it. Alright, the last, not the very last paragraph, the next to last paragraph. Kaya, she's been wondering all day. Read it to us. Everybody's following along.
The others nodded, thinking of the hard years. They've been win- winters when people shivered in tents and ate chopped up roots and shoveled nuts. They, there has been years of drought and pl- plages of tomato worms and devastating crops failures. And that mean, mean, meant people had nothing to eat for months but cabbage and potatoes. There had been times when people had to work so hard that to stay alive that so, they sometimes died just from being too tired to go on. No one wanted to go back to these, those times.
Okay, so Ben is saying, uh, this is unfair. I don't understand why we have to take care of these people. And now in this paragraph, it says the others nod and think of the hard years. What does that tell you about the people of Sparks? And the rest of this paragraph, what is it telling you about the people of Sparks? What do you think Ruthie?
I think it's saying that they don't wanna go back to what they've already had.
They've already had hard times. They don't wanna go if they let these people come in and take their resources that we know are already limited, already low, right? If they come back and take those resources, these new people move in and the resources get even lower, then what's gonna come back? These They don't wanna go back to that. Okay, well, very last paragraph, I want you to read it to yourself. Very last paragraph. Wyatt? Have you read it to yourself? Okay, the very end. Do we have a decision about what to do with these people? No. She says if they can't stay and they can't go, what is the right thing to do? They have no final decision. What does that tell you? If it says, what is the right thing? We already know that this story is a what? Okay, it is fiction. But remember, I told you there was a foreword at the beginning, right? Excer, that means we only have what? One part of the story. So if they left it with no decision, that means what? There's something that comes next. We just don't have it. So this part of the story that we've read, do you think it's the beginning, the middle, or the end? Okay, some of you are saying the middle. Why do you think this is the middle of the story? Why is this excerpt the middle? Travis?
I think it's the middle because, um, it's telling us, um, what is the right thing to do. It's the middle because if it was at the end, it would tell us what they would do. It tells if they would keep or or if they would send them off.
Absolutely. We don't have a final decision, so we know it's not the end. And then at the very beginning, we said we had a foreword, so we know it's not the beginning. So this has got to be the good. Okay, tomorrow, um, yes, tomorrow we will keep working on this text. Go ahead and close it and put it in your binder. Yes Bryson?